Good afternoon, welcome everybody to today's Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, Committee of the Whole Public Safety and Human Services meeting for the Redmond City Council. My name is Jerry Lee Anderson, I'm the presiding officer this afternoon, and with me today are council members Carson, Fields, Forsyth, Kritzer, and Stewart, and I'm not sure Ms. Conn's joined us yet, but we'll announce her when she arrives if she does. This afternoon, we have five items on our agenda, and we will start with item number one, 2024 rate amendment to the 2022 South Correctional Entity, SCORE inter-local agreement for inmate housing, and I think that's going to be Mr. Captain Coats and Chief Low.
Good afternoon, Council. What you have before you is the rate increase, or the contract and rate increase for our jail services at SCORE, which is our regional jail service. The 2024 contract reflects a 3% increase in their prices for us, and so what we're asking for is for it to be moved for it, well, approved and then moved for it to consent, I believe, on December 5th.
Questions from the council on this item. This one comes up every year right around this time.
Yes.
Ms. Forsyth.
It sure does, and every year I ask, how many beds did we use on average last year?
So our contract is for 10 beds, and those beds are for our long-term commitments. It fluctuates depending upon the sentences of individuals arrested by the Redmond Police Department and then sentenced to, you know, various times of incarceration. I can get back to you with the exact numbers for this year.
Yeah, because I know in 2020, when we looked at this my first time, we had used 15, we held 15 beds, but the number that we used was more like six or four, and so we've been slowly bringing it down. 2021, it was 12, now we're down to 10. So I was just interested to see if that number is still trending downward, and yeah, so I'd love to see what those numbers look like for last year. And then the other question I had is, have we explored and can we explore what an ILA with Kirkland looks like, or the differences in why SCORE versus a partnership with Kirkland? I know a lot of the times officers have to drive all the way down there and take inmates down there, and it takes up a lot of time, so interested in how we can cut some of that time out if that's possible with a more local option.
Yes, at the point in time that Kirkland, I'll say, is ready for outside contracts, I would definitely explore that. I know there has been some conversation about it, but to date Kirkland has not at least come forward to me to say that, hey, we're ready to explore what those costing options look like, but that is definitely on our radar.
Okay, is that something we could go forward to them instead of waiting for them to come forward to us?
I will reach out again to my fellow chief and find out if they are in fact ready for contract services, and then if we were to go with Kirkland, it may be an and, not an or, so we will look to see, you know, what that looks like depending what their capacity is. There are several nuances to the jail. We have regular beds and acute beds that come with both medical and mental health treatment capabilities, which we'd be responsible for, so I will definitely explore all of our options, you know, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Other questions on this item? Thanks, folks. Is there a thumbs up for December 5th consent agenda? Fantastic, we've got a consent agenda item for you, Chief Low, thank you. Item number two on our agenda, moving on, is the Department of Justice Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant in the amount of $6,840. And I'm going to assume this is also Chief Low?
Yes.
We have a few folks in the audience from police, so they're not sitting at the table with us, though, so it's on you.
Yes. So with this, this is the annual grant that comes forward. It's a federal partnership grant from the Department of Justice to help offset or supplement the cost of bulletproof vests. This year, I believe the dollar figure is $6,800, thereabouts. On the title page of the memo, you'll see that that amount varies year to year, just as a back note. On average, bulletproof vests have a five-year lifespan, life cycle, just from manufacturer, and depending on wear conditions, that time span may change. So year to year, there's not a, if you call a sweet spot or an average number of vests that we have to replace, but this does help to offset some of that cost, and then next year's costs, I'm sorry, next year's grant award may be larger depending upon the number of vests we have to replace in the preceding year.
Questions from the council on this item. Ms. Forsyth.
Thank you. So correct me if I'm wrong if I read the memo incorrectly, but it said we needed 50 vests, and each vest costs around $2,000, but we're only, the grant is only going to cover, you know, three. So is, am I reading that correctly? Is there a 900, sorry, $93,000 additional amount of funding that we're going to need to have here?
No, so, yes, you read it correctly. The average, or the average cost of vests is approximately $2,000. In the event that we have to, I don't know that we're going to have to replace 50 vests this year. I have a question into my staff for the actual number, but with this, the award amount fluctuates based upon the number of vests that we have to replace. So in this case, you're correct. The amount we're receiving replaces three vests and has a little bit left over for additional. If we replace a higher number of that than what we put in for the grant, we would get additional monies in next year's grant award.
Got it.
And Chief, your wingman has arrived at the table here. Captain Coats is here. Do you have something to add?
Yes, Brian Coats, captain with the police department, and the chief is accurate in that, and I will also add that that 50 might have been from last year's memo on that, and maybe it just wasn't adjusted because your math is absolutely right, that that's, usually they would reimburse for a lot more than what we're showing here, so my apologies for not catching that.
Got it, thank you. And the other question that was on the memo was, do, does council want to see this every year? And I still say yes, because I think it's good to have these conversations and for us to be aware of, you know, the costs you all incur and what these situations look like. So my vote is yes to continuing to see this grant come to us.
Perfect, never hurts to ask, so thank you.
And I'm always happy to come before you guys and have these conversations, so absolutely.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Captain, as well. Any other items or questions around this one, so that we can accept the money, thumbs up? Sounds great, we're good on consent for the 5th of December on this item as well, thank you. Item number three on our agenda this afternoon is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Monthly Update with our fabulous Jan Harrison. Thank you, welcome, Jan. Ms. Harrison, excuse me.
Thank you, it's great to see you. Happy Tuesday afternoon. All right, I've been busy, and a good busy, I would say, and so I will start off with the past month, we did, the directors and the deputy directors met with Anita for a training session, and again, as we explore and lay out our mission, vision, values, and goals, and understanding that's a heavy lift, but we're making progress and it's going well. And again, just getting caught up, touchy base with Anita more regularly in terms of what has happened in the past and connecting the trainings with the council and the prior trainings before I arrived with the directors, and out of that, I have, I propose that I become the trusted advisor to the council to help you navigate your work through DEI, and I'll leave it to you in terms of what you, what are your priorities, and to be able to, you know, kick off, start off a conversation in terms of how I can, how you can best utilize my resources and my commitment to this work. The next thing is that I've been, I've got, we're moving forward with the Title VI, and our assurances has been certified and bona fide, and now I got feedback on the plan, and so they're minor, and so I'm in the process of making those updates, and in that, I've started training, you know, WatchDoc has training concerning disadvantaged business enterprises, which are businesses owned by veterans, women, people of color, Black and Indigenous, and BIPOC business owners, and really looking at how, how to approach this work, approach those entities in terms of engaging them and bringing business to collaboration with the city of Redmond on projects. And then the tribal relations, just understanding that that's a wide and deep topic, and how do you, how do we collaborate as a city governance with the tribal sovereignty, which are governance of their own, and what does that look like, and what does that respect? How do we define respect within that context, and how we define partnership? So moving forward on that. The next one is the Redmond 2050. I went, I attended a community outreach event where planning, the amazing planning team, I have to say, their, their forward thinking on, on exploring new options of how Redmond could be into the future is quite awesome. I hope you read the Times article about Mr., about Jeff, on Jeff, I mean, I think that was pretty awesome, and I think it speaks a lot to him leading the effort in this, on this project, so good for us. But the engagement opportunity was amazing, and from that, I have been engaging with the Black and African-American communities to understand why currently their population numbers are so, percentages are so low in the city of Redmond, it's under 2%, and how we can move forward and envision a more inclusive, meaningful, affordable space for them to live in the city of Redmond, and so that has been really eye-opening and quite exciting to do, and so I'm excited about that, understanding that my work is a journey, it's not a, not a, it definitely isn't a destination, it's a, it's a journey and a, and a long journey, but I would say we're moving forward. Let's see, also, the welcoming Redmond team, which is the internal commitment of staff to look at equity within the, within City Hall, and so we're building upon that, and that's moving well. We, last, earlier this fall, we had a great welcoming week event, a cultural potluck, and I think that really did galvanize and motivate and inspire and renew the commitment to creating a welcoming Redmond internally and externally. And then, again, community engagement. I didn't realize that my work was really, in many ways, divided into two aspects, external and internal, and the external engaging with the community members and community organizations is quite eye-opening, and you get to see humanity in all forms, and, and needs, and commitment to, a willingness to want to be engaged, and what that looks like. And so I am, later next month, I'll be sponsoring, the City Hall will be hosting, for the East Side Pathway, they'll be using our event space for one of their end-of-the-year events, so I'm excited about that, you know, in terms of creating a space that they would want to be in for something positive and reflecting their, the importance of their work. And then, I sent you the addendum to my earlier document about the five-year strategic plan, and it's so big, I'm going to have to take time and like read it, because I really kind of put my thoughts into it, and I think trying to ad lib would be a disservice. So it says, "Fast forward five years from now, respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion is demonstrated in all we do. Redmond has a long demonstrated commitment to creating a city that is inclusive and welcoming to all its residents. My role represents the opportunity to serve the city of Redmond and advocate for ongoing efforts by supporting leadership by way of intentionally building systemic equity, including evaluating our systems and policies, securing racial justice for everyone, and promoting belonging. The key to our success is translating our social justice and equity commitment into action. While our commitment is baked into the Housing Action Plan, Redmond 2050, our performance measures, and the strategic, community strategic plan, we must be clear on actions and intersections. I am participating in the five-year Ready Planning Process, which is currently underway. This plan will outline how my role will promote outcomes within the organization and the community. Opportunities for me to lead and support other leaders will be integrated within this infrastructure. In the near term, I have the opportunity to lead, support, the rollout of Ready to all employees in the city of Redmond. Our license agreement with the Edge Advisory Group presents an opportunity to ensure we have assessed and addressed our organizational culture, healthy and adaptive, intentionally focused on employee engagement, with communicated expectations, competency building, and mechanisms for accountability as we charge ahead in this great work." Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Harrison, thank you so much. Ms. Stewart.
Thank you so much, it's always such a delight to hear the next chapter in your journey, as you put it. So thanks for being here, thanks for sharing the addendum, and for actually, you know, having not had a chance to read it today, to actually hear it from you in person, that was lovely, so thank you. I want to answer your question directly. It is, it's my perspective that, yes, very much so, we are looking to you and this position to help guide us on some of the, some of the work that ultimately informs decisions about how to achieve our objectives related to belonging and inclusion in our city, so I wanted to address that really directly. And also, I'm so delighted just that, you know, you're continuing to uncover all of the relationships in the city. We had a chance to meet with our Human Services Commission last week, and they are also wrestling with some social justice questions related to use of public resources to provide really important community services under the brands of our trusted community partners, and I just suggested to them that you're here. So I would just suggest, you know, maybe not even suggest, but just elevate for, for you also these amazing boards and commissioners and our dozens of volunteers who maybe one day will have a chance to get advice from you as well in that position, but anyway, thank you for being here and continuing just to come back to tell us what's on your mind.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Kritzer.
Thank you so much for the update. Just a quick question, on the five-year DEI plan, a strategic plan that they are working on with, with Anita, do you have a sense from her at the moment if there's a timeline for any sort of draft to that plan, or is it still kind of, we're still on the road?
We're on the road, we're still walking the journey.
Probably sometime next year.
Yes.
Get some more milestones, okay.
Yeah, I'll surprise you one time, and I'll say, hey, you know, I have a surprise, here it is.
Cool.
Mr. Carson.
Thank you. So I had a more, more functional kind of questions, suggestions, something, so I saw the tribal relations topic, and one of the things when we remodeled the, to add the conference space here, we went to, and I believe it was the Snoqualmie Tribe, but I could be wrong, and asked them for a, some, some names of, to name the conference rooms, like we've named, we've got the Nakomis Room, we've got the Yellow Brick Road Room, et cetera, upstairs, but these are all just numbers now, and it's, it's been, it's, it's a niggle for me that, that we have not come up with these names, and I'll tell you, the, I think the right staff member for you to potentially interface with to get this done is Eric Dawson in Public Works. At least he knows kind of what the status is, so, because we were talking about it one day, and he's like, well, the tribe hasn't gotten back to us and confirmed that these are the, the names that we're going to use for, for the rooms, and it's just kind of been niggling at me, and I would love for it to be kind of finalized and not to just be numbers, because I think we can honor, you know, and I don't know what the, necessarily the convention they were going for in terms of naming, but if it's tribes, if it's whatever, whatever it is, prominent people from tribes, then great, but it would be nice if they weren't just numbers, and we actually could honor those folks from, that were potentially on this list. I don't even know that we even had a draft list, but, so it would be nice to see those actually named and, and, because it's, it's a shame, because it is a way of kind of honoring people or, or groups of people.
Gotcha, I'll follow up.
Great, thank you.
Forsyth, Ms. Forsyth.
I will jump in and just mention that before the meeting tonight, we were chatting about going through policy and language, and how much language that we all use that we can shift and modify, so I look forward to doing that work with you, changing things from master plan to something a bit more appropriate, maybe changing marijuana to cannabis, there's so much harm in our language, and I look forward to doing that work and digging in together.
Yeah, I, I, I'm very excited about that, and it's something that throughout my career, dealing with DEI and trying to eliminate harm as we move forward in the most positive way, what that looks like, and I, there is a term that, that really resonates overall, and it's called weathering, and I don't, it's, back in the 90s, a public health epidemiologist coined it, and her research focus was unpacking it, exploring it, and that was 30 years ago, and she got a lot of pushback in terms of this term about weathering, and what weathering means is that when you're, when lived experiences are inundated by systems of oppression, the, the body responds at a cellular level that diminishes the longevity because it's so relentless, and after 30 years, she just released a new book and called Weathering, and the consensus has, has shifted towards understanding that her research wasn't kind of way out of the box and unrealistic, that it had real value, and, and it really speaks to how, how language and vocabulary can recognize the, the historical harm, but also how it can start moving to eliminate it and alleviate it, and so that the ongoing stress isn't day in and day out, and, and lives are, are expanded and not reduced in terms of longevity. So I'm really excited about the comprehensive language plan and the opportunity to collaborate with planning.
I look forward to looking up that book later, thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Forsyth.
I do have a question for you.
Sure.
You mentioned that you'll be working with council, and an idea came to me when we were talking a little bit about, I think Ms. Stewart mentioned, the other commissions. It'd be lovely to work with them if we had an opportunity to just get it together with all the commissions and commissioners to work on the same topics, so that we all start to speak the same language, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, so just an idea, if it's possible to facilitate that, I think it'd be great.
Okay, good to know.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item? Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
All right, take care now.
All right, item number four on our agenda is with our fabulous fire department, fire save and last report from both quarter two and three, so pretty meaty this afternoon. Welcome, Chief Shepherd, and, oh no.
Assistant Fire Marshal Rich Gieske.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Yes, this is a standardized report that we bring to you every quarter. Due to scheduling conflicts last quarter, we did not present for the quarter two, which worked out okay, it was a very light quarter for us as far as investigated fires, we only had one. Third quarter was a little busier, we had 10 this, this last quarter, so the good news is that overall, over the last running five years, total number of fires and our outcomes for those fires are still exceeding our expectations and our goals, so that's the good news. But there are quite a few fires and some details in there, and be willing to answer any of the questions you have on the report.
Any questions from council on this informational item that we're not currently seeing on the screen, so you might need to describe some of them if you're answering a specific question.
Did you not get your package?
We did, but the public can't see it right now, so, Ms. Forsyth, go ahead.
Um, I thought Chip was going to share.
I could probably do it as well. I had a question on the, how the property values are determined, because some of the photos we were looking through, I was questioning, there we go, I was questioning what some of the property values, estimated values were, and what it looked like the home was, and there seemed to be a bit of a cognitive dissonance for me, so if you could just briefly touch on that.
That is a great question. So valuation is a very difficult thing to ascertain, and so what we're looking for is a consistent way to determine the valuation of structures, and so what we do is we look to the King County Assessor. They do, they do assessments on both improvements on the property as well as the property itself to come, come up with your tax assessed valuation. Most of the time, that works really, really well. Where it doesn't work very well is if you have properties that have not been sold recently, that have been in the same family or the same ownership for a very long period of time.
Got it.
Those values can be depressed. Public buildings typically have a zero value per the King County Assessor because there is no taxes collected on those structures. Some condominiumized buildings where you have 30 or 40 or 50 units within those buildings, those values can also be down or really hard to determine as compared to like an apartment building or something like that, so it has a lot to do with how the land is developed, but generally, our go-to focus is the King County Assessor's valuation for the improvements of the property.
Okay, so some of these numbers we're seeing could be very off, and some could be...
It could be very off, yeah.
So I was picking up on something real.
Yeah, you definitely were, but we, I've been talking with all of my colleagues in the investigation field and other private branch divisions, and across the industry, we're struggling with how do you ascertain values, especially when they're going up as rapidly as they are.
Right.
To have some sort of even keeled analysis of those valuations, so the King County Assessor is the best thing we have going so far.
Good luck.
Yes.
Ms. Kritzer.
Could you speak to some, there's a couple of them, many of them, it looks like the, you know, the, our wonderful fire department was able to get in there, and there was relatively little loss, and occupancy rate was, was high afterwards. Can you speak to a couple of the ones that, that were more significant in terms of damage and some of the causes there, just so we're aware?
Sure, yeah, we can take a look back. In the causes over the last five years, the causes have been really pretty standard. We're looking at a lot of brush fires, within, and then when we're within structures, we're looking at a lot of cooking fires. So cooking fires kind of has been our number one and remains our number one cause of fires, and that's pretty consistent in the, the tables that are on your screen now. Specifically in this last quarter, there were a couple of fires that were significant, significant in the value of loss. We're fortunate in the city in that we have a lot of fire-protected buildings, and so even when we do get fires that can be very significant, say a kitchen fire, because they're fire-sprinklered, or because there's fire detection, or because we have fire extinguishers that are being maintained during annual inspections and that sort of stuff, we're getting a lot of early intervention in those fires, and so that even though we do 200 and, 200-plus fires a year of things that catch fire that shouldn't catch fire, we do a very small number of fires we actually have to go investigate. So very few fires get large enough for us to cause to do an investigation on those fires. But of those that we had, there are several in multifamily structures this last two quarters that were intentionally set, where people are in some of our newer buildings that are fire-protected, 200 or 300 units in a building, where people are intentionally setting fires to their structures. We've seen an uptick in deliberate arson fires in the last couple of years, and this last quarter has not been an exception to that. Luckily, most of those are in fire-sprinklered buildings, so the fire damage is very low, but the water damage, because they're fire-sprinklered, we're still having water damage problems, but things dry out, they don't unburn, so we're going to take that as a win, and we're looking at ways to mitigate that, the water damage to those buildings as we can, because we do know that's an issue. Additional fires, we've had a couple of set fires at schools, mostly exterior sets, but again, they're, they're intentionally set fires. Commercial fire in a, in a... Commercial fire in a, in a, this was a battery fire in a sprinkled building, again, which is good. It was a prototype battery, so a new battery for a new device that one of our local companies is manufacturing, and the battery pack didn't work as well as they'd hoped it would. So it went off, and we actually had two fires, two different days, in two different buildings from the same battery, so go figure. Battery fires, we are seeing an uptick in battery fires, so lithium-ion batteries, they've been in the news quite a bit, whether it's car fires with, you know, lithium-ion batteries in the cars, or whether it's mobility scooters and that sort of thing, or whether it's even cell phones and tools. Cell phones have gotten a lot better, but we're still seeing a lot of lithium-ion battery fires. The fire industry as a whole is having a lot of serious conversation about what that looks like and how best to respond to those. There's an environmental issue with runoff, there's a, a health and safety issue for the exposure to the firefighters, there's a rekindle hazard with those batteries over time. We're seeing some large-scale installations of batteries that are causing problems, industrial scale and, and, what's the word, like, power size generation scale problems. So the code is developing rapidly on that, and so we're still focusing and looking at that as an industry as well, but that is an emerging trend. What else did we see large this year? Some large fires in a couple of homes, some that were fire-sprinkled. This is one, bath fan, so not a lot of damage to the interior of the structure, a lot of damage to the roof. I think Chief De Spain has, has reported to you guys previously, and, and you've heard, you burn the house off, burn the roof off a house, and it's, a lot of times, it's gonna be just a demolished house at that point, right? The, the amount of damage is gonna be pretty excessive, and it just isn't cost-effective to do that rebuild. So that was one of these cases here in this single-family residence. Go ahead.
And on that one, was it, was it an old fan, or was it an improperly-installed new fan?
It appears to be an older fan.
Okay.
In, you know, 20 years plus of use, and probably a, an issue with the lint buildup typically is what we're seeing in those. We, we see a couple of those a year, so it's not entirely uncommon. And again, those tend to be attic fires, and typically even in fire-sprinkled buildings, fire-sprinkled homes, we're not sprinkling those attic spaces. So that's outside the envelope of that protection level, so. Fairly large fire in a house in May. This is a, a smoking fire, smoking material fire, was on the exterior of the garage and extended into the interior. Everybody was safe, no injuries, which is good. Caused a lot of damage to the, to the non-sprinkler garage, there were no sprinklers involved in this house at all. And then, yeah, that's about it. This was, this actually was a, a fire-sprinkled home, and it looks pretty horrific. This was a garage fire, and the fire, when typically the garages are not fire-sprinkled, or there might be a single fire sprinkler within the garage, and this fire came out of the, the front doors of the garage, came up the exterior of the building, and back into the structure. And so the, the fire was much larger than the designed fire for the sprinkler system, so overwhelmed the sprinkler system. Again, no injury, but yeah, it is possible to have fires in single-family residences that are sprinkled. And remember, unlike commercial systems, single families or sprinkler systems are designed to get the people out of the home safely. That's the success. We're looking at the life safety, not the property conservation for single-family residential sprinklers. That's all I have.
If I could just add one part to this, and I know we focus a lot on that fire loss, but even when you look at the last slide, you can see that the property value and what that save is, and when we really quantify the work that we're doing, you're seeing that, again, we, we focus on that fire loss, but it's more significant, it's the save that we have, and the fact that people are going to be able to reoccupy that home, which keeps those people here in the Redmond community. And when we look at some of our multifamily units, we're talking about decreased opportunities for displacement. When we look at our strip malls, and we see that there are fires that we're not successful at stopping at the early stage, I believe it was Tropea, is that, you know, the economic impact to the city when all those businesses rebuilt in another city, which has taken place with those businesses. The employment loss, again, that, that revenue that comes in. So we quantify it not only through the loss, but through the save, and we have more significant savings than we do loss, and I just wanted to impress upon you that.
Yeah, and to, to back that up, on, on the screen, you'll see kind of our dial gauges, metrics, and the value saved, we're at 99.1%. That's over that, almost a full five-year average, or five-year running total. And so the valuation that we're looking at over that five years is just shy of $1 billion in property valuation. That's not, that's just the structures, that's not the property associated with those structures. So 99.1% of $1 billion is, is a fantastic save rate, so.
I'll just add also, it's on this slide, but also zero civilian fire deaths. That's, that's huge, and just want to say thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just as you were talking about garages not being sprinkled and battery car fire, I know those burn a lot hotter, wondering if our future looks like having sprinkled garages? I know that the purpose is to save lives, not necessarily property, but because those burn so hot, I'm just, if you could for, you know, tell the future, five years, do you think that's something that we'll see down the road as far as building code upgrades?
I think so.
Yeah.
Right now, the National Fire Protection Association has a fire standard called NFPA 13. It's the guide for the installation of commercial fire sprinklers. It would cover things like parking garages. And one of the things they're looking at in the next, next version of that code when it comes out is increasing the amount of water in those fire sprinkler systems in commercial parking garages. So when we have buildings like under office buildings and whatnot, having a higher amount of water coming out of those sprinklers. I think we're gonna see something similar in residential sprinklers as well, whether it's a national side or whether it's a local side, because there is a risk there. Whether it's mobility scooters, you know, anywhere you're charging those batteries, you have a risk of having those battery fires. And so providing that protection would provide that early notification within the single-family residences, help hold that fire in check, and for those people to get out, I think would increase the safety even in the single family.
Yeah, I'm here for it. If you need us to do anything to back you up, I'm here for it.
Just trying not to get too far ahead of my skis with the national code lines.
No, no, you're good. But I was just musing the other day, noting myself, like, there's not enough plugs in our standard homes anymore, because everything we do is battery-powered and plugs in, so, I mean, it just is logical to think that that's where we're headed, so, thanks.
Other questions on this item? I have a couple comments, actually, just looking at this chart, which is really helpful. Were there, just for additional information, maybe next time, an ask, can we also include firefighter injuries and deaths? I'm assuming there aren't any, but it would be helpful for us to keep track of that as well. And then also, given that, I appreciate the conversation around the value of homes being lost, but it's not always just about the money, lives saved is a super important piece of that. But one of the things I'm looking at here is, it's hard for us to tell in the occupancy area if there's residential occupancy, and one of the other things I flagged on the, the report slides as well was the percent, that was 0% occupancy, so we can't use that space as it was anymore. Tropea was one example. So being able to tell that story, commercial, residential, retail, like, what is the scale of the loss in the last four or five years, that, that would be really helpful to understand.
Yeah, and I do have those numbers, I can give those numbers to you. So the way we're tracking that is, we're taking a look at how many divisions of the building are there? So if you were in a Tropea strip mall, you'd have five units. And if we're burning up one unit that can't be occupied, or the five units can't be occupied, we're counting that as 100% loss or five units lost. We're counting the total count of units displaced due to the fire versus the total number of units available.
Right, displacement is probably a better word, but that would be helpful just to keep track of where we're, where we're landing on this. And I know this is for a summary presentation, so maybe the annual report or something that helps.
Yeah, the good is I can report, too, that the firefighter injuries, and obviously firefighter fatalities are zero, but the injuries are also a very rare occurrence.
Thank you.
So.
Glad to hear that. Awesome. Other questions on this item? Looks good, thanks, folks. Next item is a summary and storytelling about Fire Prevention Week last, not week, open house for 2023.
Yep, and you get me again for this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gieske.
I'm presenting on, on behalf of our Angela Brown in our office, who is the coordinator for this program. She had a conflict, so could not attend this evening. Let me share my screen with you again. Oops. It's a very short presentation. If I can get it to come up. There we go. So Fire Prevention Week 2023, annual occurrence. We do something every week, Fire Prevention Week, it is nationally recognized out of NFPA, kind of on the anniversary of the great Chicago fire. This year, we did a, an open house at our Fire Station 11, our, our 111, our headquarter fire station. And this is one of two events that we do every year. We do this one in October, and in, in May, we do this, what we call the Spring Safety Fair. We started that last year. Was a really good turnout this year. We had about 600 folks show up on Saturday over at Fire Station 11. We did a bunch of demonstrations, so the, the theme for this year was fire safety and fire, cooking safety, which is very appropriate, since that's kind of one of our big, our big things. So we were glad to see a, a good turnout. So we did do some live fire demonstrations, and what to do when you have a kitchen fire, and what to not do when you have a kitchen fire on your stove top. We provide a lot of information from fire prevention, about fire sprinklers and fire safety, emergency management, folks were there as well, providing some information. Our mobile integrated health team was also there, letting people know what, what community resources and what resources we can provide for the community were there. We had some of our crews come down with their equipment, so ladder company was a big hit, bringing the ladder, allowing people to kind of get up close and look at our tools and, and our equipment. And then we just had a big meet and greet. So we were able to, we had enough staff this year at, at the event to be able to kind of meet the public and kind of meet them where they were and be able to answer their questions. We have a lot of new community members, typically a lot of community members with kids, young children, and when you have those kids, your perspective changes a little bit, and you say, well, how does my child get out of that second-floor room? That kind of stuff. So we had a lot of those conversations throughout the day on, on a very personal, one-on-one basis, which I think was very helpful for a lot of folks. So, yeah, we had about 600 visitors this year, which was very similar to what we had at the Spring Safety Fair in May. And everyone that we talked to, and, and the feedback that we've gotten, was that it was, had a high level of satisfaction with what we did. So we're always looking at ways to improve that. It's hard to host 600 people at your fire station and, and have it be a quality experience for every single one, but we're, we're trying to figure that out. So be open to any conversation on that.
Questions from council on this item? Ms. Stewart?
Thanks so much, just your gratitude, and thanks for choosing the cooking as an option, because the, these reports every, or, excuse me, as a program priority for the, for the fair, because we see these reports every quarter, and in Redmond, the last couple of years, it's been one of the most dangerous activities we do on a daily basis. So I really appreciate that. When you have a date for May, if you'd like council's participation, just feel free to send us over to our calendars when you have that date, and really, thank you all for what you guys do.
You definitely will.
Thank you. Other items from council? Fabulous job, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And that is our last item for the evening. Any items for the good of the order this afternoon? I see none. Wonderful, we are adjourned. Thanks, folks. A little early.